Hello, everyone. My name is Sally Mason and I am the lead woman of voters and the moderator tonight. This candidate forum is being hosted by the Bozeman Library, Belvedere Community Library, both professionally aimed at the community of women voters voting area. The ballot will mail out this week and must be returned on Tuesday, November 2nd at 8:00 PM. The format will be as follows. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes to introduce him or herself. And following that, Bill will ask you to answer the prepared question that we sent you, which is, if you received a $1 million grant to use for the city any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why? And following that, there were questions in the audience and I will let you know how you can get in to ask your question. But at the moment, let us start with, we have three candidates to my left and two of them will be elected. That's correct. And three candidates to my right and one of them will be elected. So who would like to start first to introduce yourself?
So it's two minutes to intro and answer that question here.
But first, we will do intros all around and then we'll do the question. Okay, so who would like to be first? Go.
Good evening. My name is Eho Palmeroy. I have run a small business in Bozeman for two decades. I am very grateful for our community support. And I am also very honored to have been your last eight years your commissioners. So I'm very again because I'm chair of this community at last. So thank you so much.
Thanks so much. My name is Jennifer Ratchek and I've lived in Bozeman community for approximately 20 plus years and have a background in community planning and master's degree and have worked in a variety of fields, planning basically. I came to Bozeman intentionally. It's a place I love. I love, like so many of the rest of us, kind of the small town feel. The outdoors, the mountains, the daylight today with the fall colors and so forth. So I've been honored to have served on the Bozeman Planning Board for the past almost four years and Bozeman City Commission for the past year and really look forward, this is why I'm running, to continue kind of the work of the Planning Board and implementing our community planning projects. So thank you.
Hi. I'm looking at this camera. So hi, everybody. My name is Christopher Coover. I used to give him pronouns and I'm running for Bozeman City Commission. I'm from Montana and I come from a family that's called Montana Home for several generations. Most of them might know that I was appointed to the commission earlier this year and I'm running now for the same reason that I sought appointment then, which is because I really care about Bozeman and I understand the challenges that many folks face as they work as major homeowners because I'm confronted by those same challenges. By many people in Bozeman, I'm burdened by student loan debt. I rent my apartment and I'm being priced out of our housing market. I've worked multiple jobs and I'm still no more than a couple paychecks away from having to make really challenging decisions. The point is I have a lot in common with most people in Bozeman and I'm serving and I'm running so that our voice and our experiences have a seat at the table. In the six months I've been on the commission, I have helped to shape some really important decisions. I was successful in securing half a million dollars to help people who are still being impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. I helped to make sure streamlines fully funded so we could develop and grow our public transit system. I've continued to elevate conversations about equity and inclusion and I've centered affordable housing in every land use decision I've been a part of. I've demonstrated a show for individuals, for small businesses, and then I'm committed to creating a resilient community. And I'm excited about the opportunity to serve as commissioner for the next four years. So thank you all for the time tonight. I appreciate it. I just wanted to try that. It's like the first answer in a forum is like the, it's like the first pancake. You know, you gotta get one bad pancake out of the way and then the pancake is all the better.
My name is Troy Morrison. I use he and him pronouns. I'm running for Bozeman City Commission. And I grew up in Montana. I spent my whole life here. Grew up in my city, Montana originally and came out here seven years ago to go to school. And decided to stay largely from the community that I've connected with here through grassroots organizing and through being a pressure. Much of my professional experience that I have in these communities with agencies, like the Help Center, like Haven, like the Warming Center, working with folks experiencing homelessness, survivors of domestic and sexual violence, with folks struggling with lots of suicide. And it was connecting in that work that helped me find like what I want to do and connect to this community that I want to call home. And for the last eight, seven or eight months, I've kind of taken a hiatus from crisis work. I'm back into it again. I'm now full time at the Warming Center. But I hopped into service industry work. I'd always kind of fantasized about working in a restaurant. And it was there that I really started to see the way in which small businesses are really struggling. Service industry workers are really struggling. And this community deserves representation from the people that actually make this community run and that make up the bulk of this community. The median age in Bozeman is 28 years old. 60% of the community are renters. Service industry is what keeps our tourism industry thriving and alive. And we need representation from those groups to be having a voice because we are actively being priced out, we're actively being displaced from this community all the while trying to make it our home, all the while making this community thrive. And that's why I'm running for the commission.
How kind of you, Emily. So shall I talk into this wonderful conversation? I should not talk to the room. Wonderful. I'm Emily. I'm running for two year commission seats of all of these lovely individuals here. And at the core of my campaign, I should say our campaign, as Emily and I are running a campaign in tandem as we believe a lot of the same thing, at the core of that campaign is a desire to understand and deal with the fact that Bozeman is growing, Bozeman will change. And how do we do that properly and sustainably in a manner in which we can maintain the small town feel people care for so dearly? But also accept that there's nothing we can do about the fact that half the country wants to move here a lot. So that is where our campaign lies. We're focused deeply on unified development code overhaul. We're focused on trying to stop corporate welfare, the ways in which we're subsidizing gentrification of the city. We're focused on trying to get people who have not been heard that voice. And I think a lot of candidates talk about that specific element of this, people who have not been heard traditionally. And I think Emily and I bridged the gap between renter, landowner, well, bank owner, landowner, renter, landowner, employer, employee, employer, landlord. We hope to find a way to bring all the different voices to that table. Emily's life has been dedicated to the people in this town who have the least and she's lived around and her community is based on people who don't have a voice at that table, as other people have said. So it's my pleasure, my honor to run alongside her and try and harvest with her to bring those voices forward and prepare the next step that this city is going to take because huge things are happening right now. And instead of trying to band-aid other problems, we have to make sure the structure is there ready for us to move forward. That's what I'm about. Thank you, Sally.
And Emily? Okay. Well, this is already 10 days. So that requires me. I just rushed home and rushed back here from Ashley Nursery where I work. My name is Emily Toledo. I'm running for one of the four-year Bozeman City Commission seats. I originally came out here, my sister lived out here and I did collaborative research with someone at the university. I worked in a research lab there for quite some time before getting burnt out. And going back to my roots, my father's a third generation nurseryman, so it was pretty easy transition. So now I'm a foreculturist with a research science bent as opposed to the other way around. I'm running because I live here and I work here. I've got a life here. This community has shown up for me time and time again. And I've tried to find every single way that I can to show up and return. I constantly advocate for other people. I come to meetings. I read commission meetings from the 80s and onward. To try and wrap my head around how we got to where we are and what that requires in moving forward. I'm concerned that people are getting pushed out of here. I'm concerned that this town has been focusing on marketing its amenities as opposed to recognizing and supporting the people who actually provide those amenities. And I didn't need to flip things right side up and take a look at how our policies are serving people as opposed to exterior interests. So I appreciate y'all having me here again and this week that we are running in tandem. It's a very cool election. Four out of five voting seats are up, so things can shift this time around.
So I asked the, we asked the candidates to prepare the following question. If you received a $1 million grant to use for the city any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why? And who would like to fill out this?
Okay, so this is an interesting question. I'm a decals person. I'm a data person. So of course I get a question and I have 10, but I don't get those answers. So the way in which I need to approach this is number one, bet the dough, right? I grew up, there's nothing free in this life. And the last thing I'm going to do is set some new funds that have any strings attached. So where's the money coming from? Tax payers? What's the thing? Is it that? You know, there's a benefactor of some sort. I didn't have the answer to that. So I proceeded under the notion that Bozeman as a city, let's say Jeff Mahaly, bought a lottery ticket on the city's behalf, right? And we won the lottery, you know, as opposed to a grant. So we bet the dough, right? You know where it came from. We're good to go now. We need to invest it. And I think that that looked, you know, in my opinion, what I would like to see is a revolving loan fund that is used for people to fix up their own properties, focused on owner occupied residences that are at risk of being displaced right now. Everyone wants to be able to stay in their home and I think it's a great way to foster gentle influence as well as permit people to stay who are vulnerable at the expense of that. So I imagine somewhere between like $760,000, that get that started, keep that going. And I gotta be honest, you know, the remainder there, the $240,000, you know, it's been a hard couple of years and I think this town needs a big party. A block party, citywide that like no one has ever seen. But man, this place needs a party. Money we didn't have yesterday and it's money that's not earmarked yet, let's celebrate. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this seems a little dry compared to a party. I love this question, both for its simplicity and also an opportunity for us to kind of be creative with it. So I have a fairly simplistic answer and what I thought makes sense given our current priorities, our current housing prices is to split the one million into 80% for housing and 20% for conservation. So housing, I think everyone around the table here, probably most of the people I heard for last night is a number one priority. It's a number one priority for our current city commission. It's a priority of our growth policy. And so to spend 80% on housing, I think makes a tremendous amount of sense. And the conservation to me is extremely important. And I believe meaning conservation oriented planning strategies. So to prioritize how we spend the 800,000, 200,000, I propose looking at the plans that we have. We have a number of city plans, the community housing action plan, financial action plans, growth policies, strategic plan, parks and trails plan. So we need to go to those plans to figure out how to spend that money and how to prioritize priorities within that spending. And then really importantly, we need to involve the public. All the decisions regarding money need to be transparent. And we need to be a community, that have to be a community dialogue and held in the public process. So prioritize seeing housing while not thinking about our environment.
I, yeah, I also really thought this was like just a tender question, very wholesome question to start out these forums. And yeah, I thought, thought for a while and really tried to figure out like, how do I, how do I demonstrate like a really firm and nuanced mastery of all the different things that the city can be prioritizing its funding for? But I think I just had to kind of go with my heart and what motivates me and what would inspire me if the city were to use a million dollars for it. And assuming that it is like a plan, there's no strings attached, we apply it for, we got a million dollars. Is to put every dime of it into the Housing Department of HRC to put the bill for the warming centers that we can have it running all year round. We, and it's like, could be really practically to do it right now, like imagine we got it today, to take the next several months to prepare as a staff and as an agency and as a community for moving towards one that is open 365 days a year. We know also that if the city were to foot the bill for like a million dollars, there are federal funding like programs that will only give money if you match. So we could potentially get $2 million suddenly, man, we've set this in motion. We have some momentum. And knowing that there are, you know, we have 120 beds at the Warming Center right now. And we have day center operations where folks are coming in and working on resumes, trying to figure out how they can get back on their feet, trying to find jobs, trying to get, to connect even yoga classes so that they can take care of themselves throughout the day. And we know that it is a core component of a healthy community and being provided as a resource all year round, not just in the colder months. And so, yeah, and knowing that that also saves us money. Folks experiencing homelessness in this community through use of public transportation or using the hospital or from law enforcement costs us about $28,000 a year. We know that somebody housed, even in transition, costs only about $11,000 a year to the community. So in a way, it is kind of investing it.
Thanks, Sally. I also agree. This is a very interesting question. And when I was thinking about it, I think it's interesting in the sense that it's not something that hasn't happened before. It's actually happened pretty frequently to the city of Bozeman. And having earlier this year, we were considering how to spend $12 million of our funds that were basically a gift to the city of Bozeman. And so this is something that I've experienced contemplating and experienced talking to my commission colleague about and talking to the public about. So for this, when I kind of leaned on that experience and what I wish we would have been able to do with some of those funds we got. And so to put it in perspective, $1 million is a lot of money. But when compared to the general operating weather of the entirety of Bozeman, it's actually not that much money. That said, $1 million can be transformational, especially considering the challenges that we're facing now, the challenges that are still being presented because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So all that said, I would use $1 million. I would use the $1 million grant to assist low income families for paying for childcare. And thinking about this question, like I said, many people, and my first thought was housing because housing continues to be a top priority for our community in a crisis that we're really working on our way through for years to come. And it's funny, you could definitely use $1 million of grant funding. But I think applied thoughtfully, grand dollars used to support the charter and to use the low income families would not only provide economic stability for our low income families who are also working, but it could also help alleviate some of the workforce shortages we're experiencing. But if we don't start to solve that, it actually won't replace the case of these. So that's how I would spend $1 million.
Why do I like this? Why? I like it too. Which you would like to be next. You do?
I was, no, I'm sorry. Okay. $1 million, like Commissioner Coover mentioned, it can be a big money, but right now according to housing, childcare, etc., they are our top priorities. So I'm thinking, what can I benefit to everybody? What I'd like to do is, I'd like to work with Bozeman Sunrise Lottery Club and we, to make the $1 million and matching fund, we grew. And we together, we can have a parks and trails, makes it greener and trees. So those kind of things, I can benefit myself and my family and my children and my grandchildren, grandchildren, grandchildren. According to study, what it says is, people who spend the time with the greeners make it healthier and happier. I have a scene, when tsunami hit Japan, we had a fundraiser. We raised $20,000 and then I told them, let's lend to Bozeman Sunrise Lottery Club. It was one of the best decisions. It took time, but later it become $80,000. And then we went there for one of the places, giving the highest one. What do you need? They said, we need fishing trucks. So we gave the buyer all these trucks. So I think $1 million, we cannot have that much of rural water or childcare. How can everybody can spend and care? Okay, that's working with one of nonprofit organizations, nonprofit sector. And let's, everybody enjoy like this, as they mentioned about. So I like having more greener and parks and trails. That I feel that is great contribution. Everybody can enjoy. And $1 million, I feel like the end, well spent. Thank you.
Sally, some wonderful suggestions from everybody out there. One thing that everything has in common and the answer, my answer at least, is one word, land. Whether you are looking to have a beautiful town square around which community or city revolves, whether it's talking about parks and trails, whether it's housing, whether it's working partnership with nonprofits to further their goals, or whether it's a mix of all of the above, you need valuable, high quality public land in the center of your cities for which to achieve anything. Now Bozeman is, and we will need land around which public spaces to accommodate all of these needs that the city has. And so the other feature that I should mention about land is, once you sell it, it's very hard to get it back as a government. So only by having another tricky problem, public land is precious. And when you get a cash infusion like that and you have the opportunity to buy a lot, no matter how small, you can put that to any one of those fantastic uses, but only if you have that land in the first place. And land is precious. It is fixed in quantity. And that is why that is the most, what I would spend $1 million on in whole would be to purchase a plot of land in anticipation of all of these needs as the city continues to grow.
Okay. Perfect. Final question. So now I want to ask you a rapid fire question. Who, you, okay? Let's start with you. You okay?
Yeah, I have three, two dogs and a cat and they're all black and white.
Okay.
I have a 10 month old puppy who bit me.
Emily has four chickens. Which, which I also help take care of and I'm this close to getting a cat, but I just, I just need to.
Why do you have to be chicken?
Right.
Do you have a pet?
I do and they stayed with us for 16 years and for eight, five.
A dog?
Yeah.
I don't have a pet, but it's not, I love animals. Just by being a dog, I make sure I have a dog. I don't have a pet. I love animals.
Yes, so in addition to the chickens, Ben, who's our other roommate in the audience right now who supports us, he has a couple of fish. And then we actually just were able to rehabilitate in the American Red's book, a successful re-release. And so, yeah, little Acorn made it. But yeah, so it's no longer.
And what's the last book you read?
Let's start with you. It was a book called The Overstory.
Last book I read was called Dr. Medicine. It's about how you can apply mutual equity frameworks to healthcare.
Last book I read about the home. Well, yes.
Emily's thinking fast and slow. It's an excellent book.
Jennifer?
Eviction, which is a Pulitzer Press, right? Book on housing evictions. How's your evictions?
I'm like chest deep in rereading slash re-listening to Dune because the movie comes out and everybody around me is telling me I need to be back up to speed on everything that happens with House of Ladies.
And now for the audience questions. Here's how to submit your questions. At the bottom of your screen, you'll see a toolbar. If you can't see it, try moving your mouse over the screen or pressing all the buttons. I love how I'm telling you this. I never do it myself. The toolbar should pop up at the bottom. The Q and A feature, this amount of toolbar, is what you can use to submit your question. To submit it, select the Q and A button and type in your question. Then hit enter to submit.
Sally, it's the chat bar.
The chat button.
It's a chat. And we had that question? Yep, it's right at this thing.
Okay. Here's a question for, and you get a minute, each of you a minute to answer these questions. Okay, and this question was sent in. People who present issues at the city commission meetings are often well-prepared, well-educated, and supporting positions that may increase their wealth. How will you, as commissioner, represent those citizens who are working multiple jobs to stay afloat? Single parents, caregivers, or homeless, while they do not have representation regarding the city? I didn't write the question. Go look at.
One minute?
One minute.
Can we have forced order?
I kind of, I like, it's less anxiety inducing, but it's maybe wanting to begin.
Will you, you want, or, yeah?
Do you want to read it again?
Yeah, I need the question again, but first, the question is, you want me to force the order?
Yes, please.
Does everybody want me to force the order?
Sure.
Okay, fine. We're going to start and read it and then we'll start with you in the next one.
And roughly the question is, okay.
Here's the question, I'll repeat it. People who present issues at city meetings are often well-prepared, well-educated, and supporting, supporting the position that the city has. How will you, as commissioner, represent those citizens who are working multiple jobs? Single parents, caregivers, or the homeless, while they do not have representation regarding the city?
Yeah. I mean, in many ways, I do represent the voices of a lot of those groups. And I think it speaks to a shift that the city itself seems to be taking in terms of how it conducts outreach on issues. Right now, it is really, really hard to really understand what is happening in the city, what the city is doing. Even if you send somebody the agenda in the minutes, it doesn't necessarily mean that somebody knows, you know, oh, 60% of these are like land use. I don't really understand what they're talking about. It's pretty inaccessible. And I'd love to see a staffed position that is just city outreach. They, you know, run Instagram and Twitter and Facebook and all these different platforms to make sure that this information is there enough, which would then, I think, invite more, more engagement from these groups that have historically not been, not been brought in for these conversations, have not been represented in these conversations and decision-making processes. But at the center of it, to kind of back up, is why I'm. But at the center of it, to kind of back up, is why I'm running. I mean, this exact reason is essential to the need for new representation in those that are on levels of power in our municipal government.
Thanks for the question, a really important question. Our city is better when we hear from everyone, and we can address multiple issues and multiple needs. And I, I agree that our city needs to do outreach, both to try to engage with everyone on a, right, at different levels, whether it's in person, virtually, whatever, you know, different times of day, kind of mixing it up. We also really need to look at staffing, making sure our staff is diverse and representative of the community. Need to look at our advice reports that we're doing now right now through a series of interviews. We also, I think, need to look at the city commission. Need to have a diverse city commission. Different incomes, different backgrounds, different walks of life, and so forth. So great, great question.
I'm glad you asked the question as well, Sally. It's number three on Emily and I's agenda. And we're supposed to build trust. Local government should come to the people. I like most people to absolutely no interest in local government for large part of my life, because precisely, as Emily mentioned, they have no idea what was going on. Because Emily explained to me, here's tax increment finance, here's how we subsidize gentrification, and the numbers add up, and I just thought this is set. I completely am in agreement with my opponent, Mr. Morrison, who has a full-time position, perhaps a community outreach officer or something like that, whose job it is solely to consistently engage with the community. There's also other ways in which we can encourage participation, whether that's, say, childcare provided onsite at board meetings, so that people who have children with them have that time to attend or to re-engage or who are busy, can bring their children with them and engage in a meaningful manner. And Emily will continue. I think my answer to this question, because we're only over sixty seconds, but that's the start of the answers.
This one, this is true. When we have in-person meetings, I often fail for public comment, sorry, meetings. The people who need to be there, they're not there. Because they work all day, and then like you mentioned, two jobs, three jobs, when they come home, they're fired. And then they even make up dinners, and their children. So I have felt that kind of things briefly when I was a big Commissioner in person. So our city, and they're talking about that often, our city does, it's best, try to improve and try to please, but I think that there are a lot of areas we need to work on more, but I think our city continues to explore their area. How can we improve everybody, and not only people who has money and time and for those things, the people who really need to be there and should be in there? Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, again, it's a great question. It's something that I think about a lot in the commission, it's something I think about a lot personally. And I think, when I heard this question initially, I think the biggest thing that we can do, what I do as a Commissioner, is make sure that I'm actually embedding myself in the community. I spend most of my days working directly with folks who aren't, in fact, who aren't usually invited to those kinds of spaces that I'm in professionally, make sure that I understand what those needs are, so that when I pass my vote, I'm being informed by the experiences that are in the room and issues of the voice that they're able to make. I think that's a big part, is that commissioners need to be embedded in our community, and that's what I have done and will continue to do. I also think, to, to Jen's point about our advisory board structure, I pushed extremely hard for us to make sure that we were fully ourselves accountable to make boards that were diverse. And the next step for that piece of work is to institutionalize processes that break down barriers, will do, be a part of those boards, such as having childcare meetings, having stipends, helping people with transportation.
Thank you. So, so I thought of her two things from that question, so I'm gonna first go. One is this idea that those who come and ask and participate are the ones who get served. And so that, you know, again, addresses that narrative of what is the role of the city commissioner? And it is to be discerning in that regard. That just because someone's actively participating or bringing something to you, you still have to have a discernment to say, well, who does this benefit? And who, like, does it benefit everyone in the public? Is the public, you know, benefit more so? Is it disproportionate to just one group or another? It doesn't matter who brings it to you. And then on the other hand, too, we are obligated to go and find out other ways. So just because someone's not showing up and saying, I would like cash and lieu of, you know, parkland funds to do this thing, doesn't mean that there aren't other new groups and, you know, people who will be interested in that. You can't just address the ones who are coming and asking.
Next question. We're gonna start with you, Jen. What factors do you take into consideration when you are trying to decide how you will vote on something?
Yeah, great question.
Good question.
We have to take into account the law. That's pretty important, and I think a lot of people, excuse me, don't realize how many constraints we have. There is a lot of criteria, whether it's coming from state statute, our own, that's been municipal code. So we are kind of hemmed in when it comes to some of our decision-making. Paying attention to community need, to public testimony, to the public who is not testifying, which could be the future people who are presently here, children, and so forth. So really kind of taking into account the big picture and how a decision plays out, both on our landscape and within the social fabric.
Yes, yes, I think Jennifer makes a fantastic point that unfortunately, a lot of people look at the city commission as an opportunity to fulfill a wish list of things that you can do, and most people can't, because most of our state legislature constricts what cities can do. So the first question, I suppose, one should ask when one decides to turn to something is, can we do it, which the answer is usually not. The second, very important thing to me, that Emily specializes in greatly, and I'm very pleased to call aside for this, is do the numbers add up? Because in so many cases, you might be well-intended in a policy that you're looking to announce. However, you're actually financially creating more problems than you are solutions. And perhaps if you've addressed the same problem in a different way, you would have created more available funding, been able to address even more problems. And so unfortunately, I think, many cities' policies, often, as well-intended as they are, can cause more harm than good with regards to the numbers and that. So that, that, that's a huge important question, because people can say about the property taxes in the cities, and we have to make sure that it is spent wisely and well.
Yes, thank you. It's a good question, like the previous, to mention about the, how we have to comply with the city's rules. And there are these, and also our city staff, they're just well-equipped and they're experts. And they provide a bunch of the, they study hard and the community work, a bunch of the materials. So I read those things, and if I have a question, I ask them, and I was the manager, and also I ask some other peoples too, and we talk about what is the best way up to, for our public? Sometimes it's particularly hard, especially high. Yeah, maybe all those things, but the things are, could, I could, that's cool. Not only sometimes, but every part. That's what I base on the situation, reading materials and common sense. Thank you.
I would, I would agree with a lot of things that you shared earlier. When I make decisions as a Commissioner, I think about the laws and the rules we should follow, the criteria that applicants have to meet, or to make a positive binding. I think about and look to the plans that we have that we've developed in partnership with a broad cross-sector of our community to see how they are aligned to those plans. But I think the most important thing that I consider is, is a policy or a rule, is it going to inadvertently perpetuate any sort of inequity, or perpetuate any sort of harm that has either been done purpose, or has been done by mistake or unknowingly? I really believe that policies are either, can promote equity or can perpetuate inequity, and there's not really policies following between that. So I try to make sure that I'm on the side of promoting equity.
So when considering whether you're gonna vote on something or not, again, bringing back that discernment that I spoke about earlier, but yes, the legality of it, that means that I do not make it creative sometimes. Sometimes civic virtue requires a little bit of civil disobedience. I don't know if that makes sense. You know, also, is it a real house? Is what we're looking at doing something that actually should be the role of a local government for now? Is it something that is actually maintainable for local governors? So is it a real house? Then also prioritizing. You know, I, you know, my thing is, I need to be convinced that something is in the best interest of the public in order to vote yes on something. And so, yeah, I think people also need to adjust their expectations. City commission doesn't have a bad one. And we're not going to run anything like that, so.
Awesome. I think first and foremost, I like to break decisions down by who is likely to benefit and who is likely to be hurt, who will be helped, who might be hurt by a decision. And in keeping that grounded, in considering harm that may be baked into the system, structural inequities that might be, might be furthered or worsened by a decision. And being prioritizing at the very center, what we deserve as a community, what decisions are informed in best practices that we know make communities healthy. So starting there, starting with what human beings deserve, what will give them dignity, not necessarily, which is shifting priorities from folks that are experiencing hardships right now, folks that are already struggling, and investing the energy, investing momentum, investing prioritization in those communities rather than communities who, you know, to the previous question, often show up in our labors at the city commission.
Thanks. Next question, I want to start with you, Evan. What do you think the city can do to help small-scale local businesses in peace with large corporations in development?
That's the fourth question, yeah?
That's the fourth one.
Thank God for that question, Sally, because it's, it's right at the core of our first and foremost, right at the start of our plan and we and I is to completely overhaul the unified level. As things stand right now, in terms of business regulation and development regulation, the city is suffocating innovation. And there are so many individuals who would love to enter this economy and feel like they can't. And of course, labor shortages are a huge part of that. But besides that, I think currently, when you're looking at what to build a business, and it must be in a business-only district, and it must be set back so far, and your side ordinance, to get your side, it must be fifteen feet from there, and so on, and so on, and so on. It's never ending, however, you're never ready to enter that marketplace. So to completely overhaul the unified level, and especially move this arbitrary archaic distinction between residential and business properties, which residential businesses have been connected and close together since dawn of time, and you've made the mistake to separate them, and to undo that and allow mixed use everywhere, and allow the opportunity for small businesses, your local corner grocery store, your neighbor running a childcare center on their side of their house, whatever it might look like. And those opportunities can only exist from flexibility and capacity to create those smaller businesses.
Yeah. I agree that our city recognizes their problems. So we have been working very hard, trying to, our call, user-friendly. So our, we know there is a problem, and sometimes, I'm gonna be honest with you, our steps have some hard time to understand. So instead of, so right now, our city is working very... Also, I'm also one of the small businesses owners too. So thank you.
I think that the hardest question really is, how do we really support local small businesses? And I think, one of the things that local small businesses can't compete with differences, they can't, or they have a harder time supporting employees in things like childcare or housing. And so I think that our local government should play more role in making sure that things like childcare and housing are available so that, so that small businesses can attract employees the same way that larger businesses are able to do that. So I think that's, and that's exactly in alignment with what the commission can do, or we're about to write a law, what we should be doing to really bolster our network of small businesses that are still viable to this community. I think I wouldn't be the public health professional in the room without saying that we also need to be serious about, about, say, committed to, to recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic. The truth is that these pandemics are hoping to be more to be felt by smaller businesses who have less of a labor market to fall back on when employees get sick. So we need to continue to stay ahead of the rhythm on the combination of that.
So cutely, in regards to COVID, I agree with Christian, so there, yeah, no. No, I wasn't gonna go that direction, but I will. The reality is, is that all the businesses were hurt, the smaller businesses were. But what I really feel for too, is the people who were running businesses who were essential workers. We are getting a large influx of dollars, and we did also have a large influx previously of grant money. We can, it is not too late, the checks have not been written. We can change that and adjust it to support the people who have been struggling this entire time and serving us here. I guess furthermore, there's not a whole lot we can do about those market conditions, but we should look at what those services, like what the local businesses are catering to, because we need more of the accessible for everyone.
Yeah. When I think of what's hurting businesses right now, what's making it tough for them, it's a recognition of things that I've seen and that I've been experiencing during my time in the service industry in this community, is, is we know that housing and childcare will make it easier for employees to stay. I worked in a restaurant with like thirty staff, and I have been there eight months, and I am now the second most tenured employee. And most of them have left because they were priced out of this. Most of them did not take a job elsewhere, most of them left, those went off together. There are some, however, who did leave and went to, went to work for McDonald's, who can pay twenty-two dollars an hour, but we can only pay fifteen. So there, there's certainly a nuance to the challenges that come with supply chain that has caused things to grow, like expanded costs, like how expensive to-go boxes have gotten for restaurants, which is like a really silly barrier. But I think at the center is just, if people can stay here, people want to be working in these businesses, but they just can't pay enough, the businesses can't pay enough, and they're getting priced out.
Great question. I have served on our community food co-op board for seven to eight years, and I've really learned a lot in that position of the importance of supporting our local businesses and learning the imbalanced playing field between corporate America and small businesses, small independent businesses. And I think that there is a lot we can do from the city's perspective, and we've spoken of some of that, our code, making our code easier for the small developer. Right now, our code is for user-friendly for the large developer. As citizens, we can support local businesses, I'm looking at EPO, your local business. Support local business, it makes a difference. I also think there's a lot of creative ideas out there, like allowing smaller spaces, and downtown is looking at opening up the alleys to businesses with smaller spaces, smaller rent, and so forth, so.
Thank you. Sharon, you know, we just did...
Oh. Are you trying to trick me?
How do you plan on staying in connection with the community?
That question is my very mind. I do. My daily life, I'm always connected. That's why I ended up here. And nine years ago, there were three ladies asking me to get the old one. But that's what I do, and then I, my restaurant is not a very expensive restaurant. It's for, my husband called me from the beginning, please, you don't make expensive restaurants. So it has been into like that, but I've been seeing a lot of construction always. They're next to MSU and currently, because of springtime, people putting a lot of money on construction. So I asked... So I asked them, why do you like our food? Really delicious, regional fries, hearty food. So I I always, why you don't feel a whole lot in here? You're too too difficult, too expensive, annoying, too relentless. So I am, I think I'm connected, thank you.
Um, a big part of my jobs that I have is being connected to the community. So I'll continue to do those um in the ways that I have for the past five years, which has really led me to be able to get to know virtually all of our nonprofit leader across the community. And I'm connected to the people who are writing services every day to people in our community. Um, I uh serve on boards and nonprofits, uh, and even on the board of a small bank, because that's how much I care about being invested in things that make our community run. Um, I also think that through this campaign, you really have a chance to see um how candidates are running campaigns. And there are some candidates, like myself included, who are committed to making sure that we're connecting with people by giving, like knocking on your door and hosting events and and put in um corporate communities online, posting updates to our social media, sending out news, there are all these things um where we are connecting with people. And I can speak for myself, but that's not gonna stop until I'm elected as the commission. Because those have been incredibly valuable, helping me understand what people are experiencing, what people are feeling in our community.
So how to stay connected? So there's ways that I'm connected now, which have happened fairly organically, um, just because of where I am within the city. Um, you know, my background, uh, I I just interact with people from all different walks of life, right? And the same day, I could be out, um, you know, doing a construction job, cleaning up or something, kind of moonlighting. Um, and then be, you know, talking to a Nobel laureate up at MSU about their latest publication. Um, so when you're able to interact with so many different people, um, and you're comfortable with that and you're like adaptable to that, that's important. But that's for me personally, um, the city, we have to reassess entirely that and accept that we are completely unapproachable for all but a very small percentage of the population. Um, and so we need to meet people where they're at and look into different technologies. Um, you know, I'll quickly say this, if we can't put in a single space, one page, what it is that we're trying to do and communicate that to the public, we might not be needing to be doing it.
I think uh when when I used to think of like elected officials, to me, they like, they didn't really exist. I never saw them, I didn't see them at the grocery store, I didn't see them out in the community. And that has been fundamentally uh antithetical to how I've been trying to run as a candidate and how I hope to serve as a commissioner. Um, I will continue to recreate in our community, I will continue going to the places that I have been going, I will continue being um invested in in the restaurant community, I'll continue to be invested in the crisis work community. Um, these are central to why I'm running and and how we've been running. Um, it's also uh shown the power and the social change potential of of knocking doors. Um, our campaign is really focused on ground game and it's probably nearing our ten thousandth door that we've knocked. And that is, that is a fundamentally different way which our current city government interfaces with the public. Um, and we talked with communities that have battled with the city and all they said was, I just wanted them to come and talk. I would have said yes to a development if they would have come and talked to me at at my door first.
So uh I've been a public servant for about twenty years and part of being a public servant has been um working with the public in a variety of ways, uh, on phones and meetings, um, various uh outreach both throughout our county, our city and our state. Um, I've taken that seriously. Uh, I'm a community planner, so you have to involve community. Uh, as a city commissioner, I believe I've got to kind of keep that up and really make sure that I'm connecting with uh the variety of folks in our community. Um, uh, just simple things like once again, kind of um going to local stores. Uh, I'm a walker, I worked on Main Street for fifteen years and just, you know, being friendly and having conversations with people.
So uh a lot of, part of the reason we have four seats of undergrads at this time now is because people quit because nineteen thousand two hundred dollars a year to work twenty hours when it's not is 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 perhaps inadequate for them, but twenty hours is a lot, I'm sure that people who are current on the commission can accept that. It's asking an extraordinary amount of stuff. And that's why I've also tried to repeat this in other occasions, I will work this job full time. I don't care about a month, I'll be fine. That all the different forms of hours that people have mentioned here only matter if you're doing it fifty, sixty hours a week consistently, not just doing a pen or whatever it takes to show you something impressive, yes, and that's the point. You know, then comes out to things like, I've gone directly to people's addresses of their houses to ask them about their opinions when they wrote letters to the editor of the Baltimore column. I want to have a deep conversation with them rather than just read two columns there. And so that's, that's where I stand is I will work this job full, full, full time. And then if I have to get a part time for someone, a part time for someone, but this will be one hundred percent the priority of my life.
I think you've heard this a few times and I think that it's just critical to know that with not a commissioner that's serving, that doesn't put in more than the known doing the very minimum, you can't be a commissioner and do the very minimum.
I did acknowledge that.
So yeah, it's one of the, it's supposed to public to know that that's actually, that's not a commission that does that, because it'd be impossible to be a commissioner and actually do that.
I I completely agree and I know I was at that beginning, but uh there's also the next step and that next step is treating it as a full time job, which I don't have a reason for.
Next question. What do you cherish the most about this community?
Oh. You know, I cherish a lot about Bozeman. Um, I think that I'm from Montana and these smaller communities raise me for the reasons that I have the road map that I have, for the reasons that and I owe so much to um to communities like Bozeman across Montana. Um, specifically about Bozeman, I think one of the things that is drawing people to Bozeman, um, aside from they're just beautiful, is the fact that when you come to Bozeman, you feel a sense of community if you don't feel the other places. And it's my guiding mission to protect that. And I view growth through that land, which is that if we are, if people are coming to Bozeman and they're connecting with that part of us of our identity, that it's very community focused, um, we should be welcoming into that and we should be saying, hey, here's something different. Welcome to this community, how do we look you in? And I think that's what I mean, that's what I will continue to do as a commissioner, to ask someone who cares about Bozeman.
And what would cherish the most? Well, it'd be people first. Um, you know, even the ones that are rough around the edges, you know, I've had a little fortunately, they they are leaving. They'll be leaving before Thanksgiving. But yeah, you know, I'm working with my guy, but there's characters here and people are resilient. And there, you know, it's this kind of thing, you work really hard and don't really get too mixed up in in um someone else's business. You don't push yourself on them, you treat them, you know, with respect. Um, you take pride in your area, um, you take pride in your home, you take pride in your town. I've seen this place come together and rally around people who have been in tough spots before. Um, I had my ex-wife, because I was living burned down in two thousand twelve. And I was supportive entirely of that community, people I'd never been known for. And so um the generosity, the characters here, it's the people.
Yeah, I think community is is the core that keeps me, that made me stay. Um, my partner and I considered for a long time, I wanted to leave and grad school somewhere. And we decided to stay largely from just kind of finding the pulse of this community in in working in crisis work, in working with the nonprofit sector here in this community that helps keep this community bold and bright and beautiful time and time again. And I think central to that is there is this air of Bozeman in being a really uh bustling, fast-paced community, but also does not take itself too seriously. And I think that that is certainly something that feels very welcoming to me as someone who wanted to run for city commission, but didn't want to cut my hair or not wear a flannel to forums. And and I think that that's a really essential component of what makes this community feel inviting to so many different people. And I I endeavor to expand that feeling of of invited care.
Another person who talks about the people. Um, I originally came here for the mountains and the outdoors and the small town, but it's really the people that are pretty amazing. This is, um, I've lived longer in Bozeman than any other place and I don't want to leave. And it's because of the relationships I've developed here, whether it's the male person or folks at MSU or or nonprofits or school districts or um the warmies center or HR DC or the health center, whatever it happens to be. And there are some passionate people here who are committed to making this a better place. And I feel that um as a member of the city commission, you know, I believe we are all passionate. We all care, we all want to do the right thing and I feel that with the candidates here too, you know. I think we're all in there for the right reasons.
Yeah, I think really everybody's answer is essentially the same and that is that each individual person in this group and in the city has their community, whatever that looks like changes. And it might be people involved in a small, a restaurant, it might be people involved in the health department where you work, it might be cashman's nursery, there maybe works crisis work. All these different features, uh, that that completely makes sense. Uh, and so that was the case for me too, of course, and it was really with Emily and her chickens and it's something kind of so different. I lived my own life in such an urban environment, suddenly I was in the mountains and there was chickens in my backyard or something. What's happening right here? But I think more than that, it's 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 little, it's not just communities, we all know that, it's little things, such as the fact that we live next door to Witcher Elementary School, we get welcomed every day by some kids playing. Deep around ten thirty P M, I'm performing, we go to bed and I hear the sound of the train horn in the background, I just, you know, booming over the the sound of the city. No, it's it's those little things that are unique and special to this place though. Once you add them all together, create something of a reward or something.
This question makes me very emotional. I fathered my husband when we were, you are very smart, figured out something for me. He said you like to cook, you know? So he uh made a food cart at his father's studio. It took five, five months and health department brought me, I have the best estate, uh homemade uh food cart estate and the community supported me. And this community embraced me. And twenty-five years I haven't seen a small business, we talked about small business, local business, have failed. So I'm still there and I'm just so grateful. They supported me, they embraced me and I'm still and just uh just grateful. Ten-five years ago, people did not know about Korea and not think about Korea, not, but just because of pandemic, people think of more, let's eat the fermentive and uh and uh it, that's Korean, so I'm embracing, thank you.
Emily, what are your thoughts on infill within state?
Uh, I am absolutely in support of smart, gentle infill. Where things that I would like to see happen is for us to stop doing a top-down and folks on a bottom-up approach to affordable housing. Um, something like that can look like, okay, um, we have existing homes. So so I still drive the nineteen eighty-seven uh car I bought when I was fifteen. Um, so I'm very much like, if you can fix something that already exists. Also, for the first time, you know, insofar as I can remember growing on job sites, renovations were always way more expensive than tearing down a new building. Um, with the cost of materials and labels right now, uh, right now, we're seeing that shift. Um, so I am very much interested in looking at the housing stock that we already have, especially in older projects of Bozeman, going in, fixing them, making them more accessible for the aging population that's living there. Um, and then switching units, sort of ending units, add efficiency apartments, add ADUs to there, do a bottom-up infill.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of similar things to what what Emily just said. Um, we know it, we know even just adding the perspective of like our water use, that we're really rapidly outstriking our water resources. We know if we infill, we build more densely, um, we're less water consumptive. Um, so yeah, I think in in filling in insofar as making it easier, yeah, to build an ADU to um renovate units to become, especially in older parts of Bozeman, to make them more ADA accessible for retired fixed income folks. Um, is is really, it's just the inevitable direction in where we're heading. We know that we need to make these processes easier, we need to make them less bureaucratic, we need to make them less regulated, we need to make them just simpler and easier, um, both in terms of of labor and resources on the side of homeowners, but also provide financial support if that's something that we need to to assist with, because we know that that's where our community is.
Thank you. Thanks. Uh, I don't think there's a commission meeting that the word infill has not come up. It's such a popular kind of planning, but it's where these days. And our community plan talks about it a lot. Um, because really, um, the inverse of infill is strong and we want to try to grow more wisely, more compactly, which uh in taking advantage of kind of existing infrastructure and so forth. And that has to infill, but we have to be careful because infill uh can mean many different things. And I think we've seen examples in our city of infill that is hurtful to a neighborhood or hurtful to homes. Um, so this idea, Emily, of gentle infill, uh infill that um both adds to a community in the neighborhood and then it says, we need to destroy it.
Could you repeat the question, Sam? I'm so sorry.
Sure, if I can find it. How, no, not that one, that was wrong. What are your thoughts on infill within state?
Again, this comes back to our, I mean, I think one of the areas which is, I think well-intended policies such as discussions around ADUs that Jerry mentioned, really, it's a symptom of a structural failure, where if you're unable to put what needs to be put on a plot of land, because the rules are stopping you from doing that, that's the issue. The issue is not, let's make it easier to do something, it's let's make it easier to do everything, let's allow people to meet the needs of the community. And and currently, that's not anywhere near the case. I mean, unless you're in R five, like I say, I won't do a way of you couldn't do it completely, unless you're in R five, you can't build an apartment unless it's at least a thousand square feet in size. What if we can only afford a four hundred square foot apartment, what next? Right? So infill is 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 the inevitable outcome of completely overhauled development code and allowing people to to build it, because you're allowing them to do what they want, but their land is supposed to say they must do this. And I mentioned there's an ability to do that more gently, as Emily says, and that's by providing high restrictions on that. So it's not like to want to keep your fingers and you say, build whatever you want, whatever you want. You say, build whatever you want in this neighborhood to this height or to that height.
Infill. I have supported infill project that of our city center and to reduce suburban sprawl. These projects have been met with significant resistance from some people, even though almost everyone agrees with the idea of urban density as a way to future open space, wetlands and the reduced congestion. And like Eva mentioned, the land is gone, it's gone. We have to use the land widely, hopefully, and help. So infill is very important and and because infill is surrounded by the L C and all the people's jobs are there, so infill is very important, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree, I think that we're all in agreement that um infill is very central to our community growing in a way that's going to promote health moments and it's going to be in alignment with our growth plan, with our education plan, with our climate action plan. We need to uh really focus on um on the type of info that we need, which I would say is higher density infill. Because the truth is, if we are a housing crisis, but we continue to build um housing that won't support the needs of our community, we're going to be in the problem forever. And so I do really support high density infill. Um, and I think that um uh, you know, we have these conversations on the commission a lot where we have parts of our community in the middle of town that are undeveloped fields. People have a lot of feeling about those fields, being transitioned just into something different. Um, so those are the type of chat, those are the type of conversations that commissioners have to be comfortable having, because you're talking about someone's community changing. So those are the type of conversations that commissioners have to be comfortable having, because you're talking about someone's community changing or shifting. But I think that our larger community plans and the needs of our community that we have for the next, you know, for the next hundred years, it's going to help us do that.
Okay, I'm going to do a 30 second one, because what do you mean, you mean? Sorry, I'm starting to do this, and it's a huge question.
Yeah, I get to start. Awesome.
Okay. Can you see our public transportation system as being affected? Took us longer than that, but I'll just and what should we do about it?
Yeah, I mean, in many ways it is effective. It just doesn't have the reach that it needs. We've talked with lots of folks in the community who have struggled to, you know, who are, have a disability and it's tough for them to get to hit the bus. So then they basically just don't get to actually invest or experience much of the community. We know that public transportation is central to a healthy functioning city. So yeah, it just needs, it's really about growing its reach and expanding its, its reach right now.
I think our public transportation right now is a good start. But there is so much more potential there and we need to kind of keep our eye on all and of that potential, which means growth of our transit system, which means more money into the system and the ability to grow ridership, expand reach. So I, I think we're not quite there yet, but are.
So the first part is, is public transit good, essentially?
Yeah.
Is it being, no, but our density doesn't look well, unfortunately. Both our density and our population size will stop. So everybody at this table is a huge fan of streetwear. Everybody at this table wants to expand its business. But you know, I'm spoiled here. When a bus comes every five minutes, or every four. And until we get to that stage, I think user ships are going to be, user rates are going to be very bad, as everyone else has said. Well, yeah, a long way to go perhaps.
Yeah. Yes, I was, we are city leaders and for the HRDC streamline buses, I think for the city and county commissioner of city, keep some, county commissioner, I call them, please give some money to HRDC. So we can have more frequent and more route.
Yeah, I think that our public transit system is effective for what it's doing, which is, you know, people provide a system every single day to get to where they're going. Work, they provide healthcare, they provide a friend's house. And so it is working, it's moving people around in our community who maybe wouldn't have any other way to get around. I think there's definitely room for improvement. I think that will be the focal brush for the next commission to, to help navigate what the next phase of public transit in our community looks like.
So I love this question. Evan and I have spent a lot of evenings talking about this stuff. And he has enlightened me so much to nurture a public transportation system in the process. I would say that it's effective. I would say it's inadequate. But one of the things that he, we discussed, you know, that he brought to us, in the in-between, it's not just stream one. We need to look at other things too, like ride share and shuttle services. There are other public transportation tools that are useful.
Thank you. Emily, pardon me, I need to answer that question for a second. And we're going to give concluding remarks, but I would like to pause for one second to do a shout out to them. Poison and Sarah Creed, who have struggled mightily with the electronics and apparently it's worked tonight. And it didn't work last night, and I'm so sorry about that. We really wanted to have candidates all in one room, even though we can't have a full audience, as we wish, of course, because of COVID. So the other thing I want to say is I am so impressed that all of you are willing to serve on the county, or the city commission. It is underpaid, formal work, and I have huge respect for you running for office, all of you. So what would I like to start with? Final. Your final concluding remarks.
They have two minutes each. Jennifer, it is.
I was going to say Evan.
Yeah, she was the next one in line. Thanks so much to the ladies and gentlemen for putting this on. And I know it's a partnership with the Republican groups, the library, some VP, they're professional women. Thanks. I mean, I think these forums, as painful as they can be for us sometimes, are really useful. You know, they're useful not only to the public watching, but I think to each one of us and getting to know one another and getting to know the issues and, and just personally, you know, kind of it's a bit of a challenge. So I appreciate it. I guess to kind of wrap things up, you know, we have a lot of challenges in our community right now. Having lived here for 25 years, I think we're at kind of a point of greatest challenge. We've had other challenges in the past, high growth. We've had smoke and fires close to home. We've had, you know, climate change impacts. We've had tragedy. We've had good things happen. But for some reason, you know, it's like everything is coming to a head right now. So I think I think we've got to be optimistic. We've got to come together as a community. We need to work on solutions. We need to add that diversity to our boards, our staff, our ultimately city commissions to tackle these hard issues. And I think I think we can get it done if I am encouraged. And part of that is just being encouraged by who is showing up and who really is trying to bring something to the city commission. Thank you.
Yeah. I think what fascinated me throughout this campaign is that the voices are there. You have to go and find them. And that's of course, includes all the people in this room and contributing tonight, but as a lot of other people mentioned, it's really going to the people that want to talk but don't necessarily have the time or the means to. And it's kind of extraordinary to get this frankly, exceptional set of questions and an exceptional set of answers. And perhaps everybody at this table wishes they weren't running against each other or rather work with each other. So, you know, thanks, guys. What a, what a good time. But I can't, I don't want to talk anymore because I really need to go to the toilet. Thank you.
You're excused.
I am truly honored to have been your commissioner for the last eight years. And affordable housing is incredibly difficult problems. I will do my best. I just heard the good news from our city manager and finally, we got the 10, the building department, building inspectors. And that's also climateism on the end. And frankly, mentioned about their right. And also I will continue to do that. And also today, Deputy May and I interviewed about the climate sustainability board. I was so impressed about the volunteer people thinking about climate change. So we together, together continuously implemented our city climate change actions. And also very important land is gone, it's gone, preserving open spaces and wetlands and ultimate recreation area. And also yeah, we're talking about small business, keeping small, personal business, business friendly system. How we can, our city can help a small local business be stable, be there. And I do understand the issues and there's a lot of work to do. And because I've been there for eight years, I've been working so hard. So I do really understand the issues. So, thank you.
I'm just going to start by also echoing just a major thank you to the people who helped us together. It's been a really great time. I've enjoyed spending time with everyone in this room and everyone who's online. I hope you enjoy it too. So as I mentioned earlier, I am running now for the same reasons that I saw an appointment earlier this year. And they're all centered on the fact that we do care about Bozeman. For me, that care for ourselves as working hard for this community. My history of showing up and really fighting for Bozeman. I've been a part of teams. I've brought about housing solutions to folks that are experiencing homelessness. I've contributed to collaborative, I've elevated the conversation around behavioral health. I've contributed to teams that have built or have designed shelters for survivors of domestic violence. And I continue to work to ensure that everybody has easy access to COVID-19 vaccines. On the six months that I've been on the commission, I, I've really shown that I can be trusted to show up and amplify our voice to give us the things that we collectively need. The truth is that we do have the tools and the skills to build the housing that we need. We have the capacity to continue to promote and advance equity and inclusion in new and important ways. We have all the resources to fund and protect the community-based programs that we rely on. And we simply have a calling to come together to combat the climate crisis. All of those things are possible and we need a commission that's willing to fight for those. And that's exactly what I'm doing and what I will continue to do. So this sounds very campaign, but it's important to say that a vote for me is a vote for a future that includes all of us. And it's a vote for a Bozeman that not only makes space, but that creates opportunities for both survive. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So anyone that's seen any of the very few pieces of campaign material that Evan and I have put together today, you know, our thing is be bold for Bozeman. Status quo, and this is from, you know, our top officials, Ben Aron Down, has been away for a long time. It's going to take really bold movements in order to shift the narrative of what a city commission, what local government is supposed to be doing for its constituents, for neighbors, for the people living here. You know, the four-year, or I'm sorry, the four seats that are up right now, this is a really important direction. There's an opportunity here to really shift things around. Because you do need three votes. You know, in order to make something happen, you need three out of the five. You know, insofar as myself, you know, I'm smart, I'm insanely hardworking, but I'm not afraid to be wrong. I have genuine love and gratitude for this place that we call home. I feel obligated to step up in this regard. Because I don't have Netflix, I don't, I watch city, you know, commission videos. It's free, it's free. Internet's not, but you know, and so I have developed a high competency in how these different things work. I don't think we need to fake it and game it off every single decision that we make here. People in this place are capable of constant rational thought, as shown by their resilience and ability to solve problems in real time. Not on the time of government. And so when we take a page out of that book, and so Evan and I would absolutely love your support and we will write you down.
Yeah, thank you for putting this together. And thank you, everybody who's joining virtually and listening. This has been actually really humanizing. Really, I don't know, it's just been kind of fun. And I, as a candidate and as just a person, endeavor to be chronically aspirational, but fiercely pragmatic. Always eyes focused firmly on the way things ought to be, not just at the way things are. We've been seeing all around the world and all around this nation the need for, for youth to be in power. And we've been seeing the benefits when we put young progressive people in power. The changes that can be made when we're not tied down to the old system of thinking, when we're not so invested in the status quo, that we're not willing to be innovative and think about novel solutions to the problems that we're experiencing. I have lived a lot of struggles that I think that are important representations to have in this community. I went to school and I did, I did pretty well. I was a good student. I left with three degrees and I won a national scholarship. And it is still hard for me to find a job that will pay me a living wage. That is a perspective that is sorely needed in the people who are making decisions that are pulling the levers of power in this community. That is an experience that, that many people in this community share. That, that makes this community hard to stay and makes this community hard to live in. And why we know that we need to invest in the leadership of young and working-class people who make this community run, who are thinking in a visionary way, who are thinking far down the road, not just what's happening in the next few years, but are willing to keep working and prioritizing and making this community into one that can be a leader in how we tackle climate change, a leader in how we tackle the climate crisis, a leader in how we make an equitable community. And that is the commitment that I bring. And that is what I live in my workplaces and what I will continue to do, elected or not.
Well, I want to begin. I want to thank you. I'm so impressed by your thoughtfulness and your concern and it's amazing. Thank you for the time, Rich. Thanks to the library and the other founders of this forum.